Can you hear me? It sounds like people can hear me. Hello, Ken? Okay, we have a new microphone system and we're still working things out. So, welcome to our special meeting of the Arinda City Council for October 9th. And so I am going to ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Okay, Councilwoman Iverson here, Councilmember here, Councilmember Rival here, Vice Mayor Malcony here, and our attorney here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, in the business world with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will turn to our city manager and ask if there are any changes to the agenda.
No, Madam Mayor, it is a special meeting agenda, so it's got very limited items on it, so really just the one policy matter.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt our agenda?
So.
So, second.
Second.
Paul and David.
Hi.
Okay.
All right, so this is a special meeting and hopefully you all have a popular agenda. We are going to take item D1, receiving the staff report, including the state housing law updates, and setting aside the January 31st 2021 certification of the Plan Arinda Environmental Impact Report and certain related approvals, including the downtown precise plan. We're going to take them in the order that is shown here. And so we are going to take public comment first, and then our intent to do that all at once and not do it after the rest of the items from here. So we certainly welcome all of the comments, and it's okay, I don't like them. But we are going to start with public comment, and I hope I've got it ready. So we'll go ahead and get started, and I'll call up your audience so that you can be ready to follow each other's. First, I have Carolyn Mills, followed by Kathleen Jenkins.
Oh, there's a phone. Good evening. I'm the resident of Arinda since 1971. I served as chair of the Arinda Association Planning Committee for many years. I was a planning commissioner pre-incorporation and after incorporation on the design review board for seven years. And to top it off, I was a super prepared for 23 years, preparing hundreds of environmental impact reports for cities and towns and special districts. I think you folks got shortchanged, frankly, and I'm surprised that the city did go along with what was recommended. You cannot have a significant environmental impact without the proper analysis and to disregard the fire chief's comments on wildland fire. That's uncalled for. You have to consider all the agencies involved. You've got to come up with analysis of what was proposed versus what is existing. And we're adding hundreds of units downtown and we're not looking at what would happen with evacuation. We are in a designated wildland fire area, so naturally that should tweak your interest in making sure that that analysis has been completed. Even if mitigation measures cannot fully mitigate to bring it to a level of insignificance, that has to be stated, and you just can't arbitrarily say that, oh, this is significant and unavoidable, and let's move on and we'll give a statement of overriding considerations. You would have been smart to have delayed and taken the state penalty for being late versus having to deal with a lawsuit. I trust you're going to do it right. This is more than just playing with words to make it look better. The judge won't buy that. He knows sequel. That's why he ruled on it. And I would hope that you get some good guidance from your city staff and from your consultants. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Kathleen?
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Jenkins. I live at 48 Estates Drive, and I've been there for 28 years. And watching what has happened, mainly with A-Bag and HCD, first I wanted to say congratulations that you've got an approved process and HCD has gone ahead and approved the housing element. That's wonderful news. But several things have happened since then that I think are pretty scary, and I think it's drawn all of our attention to the fact that we may or may not escape a wildfire. We may or may not. And so, first of all, a lot of us got canceled. Our homeowner's insurance got canceled. And I went to the State of California, the Insurance Commission, and they gave us a list of probably 60 admitted carriers. Do you not called every one of them? None of them are accepting anybody from 94563 New Homeowner Insurance. So that was pretty scary. I don't even know why they gave us a list of people if they knew that there were no admitted carriers. So I ended up going to a non-admitted carrier from out of state, paying two and a half times the amount for one year of homeowner's insurance. In July of 2024, this tells you how crazy our senators are. Senator Scott Weiner came with SB 610, Target Fire Hazard Severity Zone Maps. He wants to get rid of them. He thinks they're impediments to housing. Such a joke. This legislation died in assembly, but Buffy Wicks contends it may be resurrected in 2025. I'm concerned about fire because I had a lot of work done in my yard. I have no trees over my house like my neighbors do. So I don't get to enjoy the things that I used to enjoy because there may be a fire. But I'm in the process of joining an existing firewasp-based community for Estates Drive. They may extend that to Lower Estates Drive, and I'm continuing discussions with Mark Evans to include Lower Estates. Our EIR submitted for HCD, submittal was found to be lacking in areas deemed unacceptable to the court. We're all really worried about that. We're really concerned about that. And you may be angry that this came about, but you don't understand that we're out there in the community too, and we may not survive a fire. So we hope that the focus of the OCC will be able to get this modified in a reasonable amount of time. Our state housing mandate should focus on protecting public safety, not preventing it. Housing density should be balanced with safety. So for many reasons stated above, I recommend we do not re-adopt the downtown precision plan, or precise plan. We don't require it for this arena cycle. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next, I have Michelle Jacobson.
Hi. I'm Michelle Jacobson. I live in Lafayette right now. I lived in Arinda for many years and was a volunteer and planning commissioner and a planning committee member before we were incorporated. I was an elected member of Arinda Association's Board when it was de facto city council before we were incorporated. I have a deep affection for Arinda. That's what I'm trying to convey. My family still does live in Arinda, and so what goes on here for that reason means a great deal to me. I guess I just, I have been involved in the litigation regarding the Plan Arinda, but I wanted to voice my hope that we can move forward with what goes, what happens now and that we can come up with some solutions that solve the problems that'll face us no matter how how it goes about. However, we can find a way to identify mitigations to balance the need for evacuation capacity increase with the addition of housing. It cannot be that we add housing and ignore the problem of evacuation capacity and emergency response capability. I hope that the council will consider hiring Fair and Peers or a similar traffic engineering firm instead of Plan Arinda to do the evacuation analysis update. Although Placeworks, I'm sorry, Placeworks is a good firm, but they are not traffic engineers. And to do an evacuation analysis is a very difficult challenge. It requires the expertise of a firm, traffic engineering firms such as Fair and Peers. They have much of the data about Arinda in their computer already because they did the transportation section of the EIR. So anyway, with that, I do hope that we can move forward with positive attitudes with one another to solve these problems and get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker card I have is Nick Wornow. If anybody else would like to speak tonight, this is the opportunity. So we'd appreciate you filling out a card and speaking.
Good evening. I'm here to complain about two of you, Mayor G and Vice Mayor Malcony, for your public comments prejudging the issue of whether the DPP should be re-adopted after the EIR is fixed. This prejudging of the issues before hearing the evidence, before reading the provisions to the EIR violates the spirit and literally the letter of the Ritter Mandate, which directed that after the EIR is fixed, the council shall consider what to adopt. But the two of you have already made up your mind. It's tantamount to a contempt of court. Your minds are already made up. You don't want to be confused by the facts. You don't care what the EIR will show about how long it'll take residents to evacuate. You don't care about how residents feel about the daily traffic backups on Maraca Hua that the DPP will cause. You don't care how residents feel about creating parking nightmares downtown, which will inevitably lead to parking meters. You don't know whether the 698 new housing units downtown that you're going to rezone for under the housing element, you don't know whether those are sufficient to revitalize downtown, whatever that means. Until I pointed it out, until I pointed it out, you didn't even know that the 1,000 units that the DPP would add are not legally required by the state housing mandate. You didn't even know that because the former planning director, Mr. Buckley, blew smoke in front of all of you. And one of you, rather than admit that you got it all wrong, one of you blamed me for not discovering it soon enough. You don't acknowledge that the housing element already has a buffer of 277 units downtown without the DPP, yet you say, oh, we need the DPP just in case. All you care about is your egos. You're obsessed with this downtown precise plan. Mayor G and Vice Mayor Malcony, you have to recuse yourself from further discussion of this subject because of your bias. And by the way, this process tonight, Mayor G, calling for public comments before the staff report, that's just another house in Wonderland experiencing your subjecting our stupid. The procedure has always been, you have the staff report, then you have public comments, then staff response, the council asks questions and staff response. Putting us first is Bass Akers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have one other speaker card from Juliette Don.
Good evening, Mayor G, city council members, city staff, and members of the public. Tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Arinda Chamber of Commerce. The chamber has watched this process for at least a decade with three different city managers. We've provided input to the current eight-year planning cycle and understand the changes in the regulations and requirements that have occurred during this period. We encourage the city to continue to comply with the state's requirements, legal requirements, to have a housing element plan and at the same time, balance the needs of our local residents, community, and businesses. We've appreciated having City Manager Biggs as a constructive liaison to the chamber, and we'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge that tonight is his last meeting as city manager, and we would like to wish him well in his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Juliette. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment and move to item two on our policy matters, which is to receive the staff report. So I'll turn to David first, and then I'm sure LaShawn.
Well, just going to introduce our planning director, Mo, by some background information. As you're aware, LaShawn joined us only recently, having come from county a lot longer ago. So she's now leading the effort for us to comply with the court's order and move things forward. So after her presentation, I have a few other remarks, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have. I'd just like to make one other note, which I think part of the reason the agenda was laid out this way too, because special meetings don't have the opportunity for general public forum. So the idea of moving the public comment forward was so as many people, they want to speak earlier and leave if they can. So certainly that was one of the motivations to structure the agenda differently this evening. But with that, I'll turn over to LaShawn.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor G, and council members. As David has mentioned, I'm the new planning director, LaShawn Cross. And next week, I will have made my mark of four months.
Good, good. Can I ask the Vice Mayor to tilt her light a little? It's shining right in our eyes here. Everyone else's light is positioned fine, but the Vice Mayor's positioning of her light is shining in our eyes here.
You seriously want me to change my light?
Yes, you're rotating like everyone else's, so it's not shining.
It looks the same. It looks the same. Absolutely the same. All right, thank you. I'll continue on. As of next week, I will have made the mark of four months here, and it has been exciting and intriguing. I wanted to take a little bit step back and then move forward in what we are discussing here tonight. For those who are joining for the first time or those who've stepped away and now returning, the Plan Arinda project consists of three primary components. That's our six-cycle housing element for 2023 to 2031, our safety element, and our downtown precise plan, which we refer to as the DPP. The plan calls for 1,359 housing units in our current housing cycle, eight years. I'm looking at a lot of information from the perspective of, how I put it, a fresh new set of progressive lenses. So what we've done so far is January 18, 2023, this document has gone to the Planning Commission, which was recommended for adoption. We've come to before the city council on January 31 of 2023, where the city council adopted the housing element. On March 30 of 2023, HCD certified the adopted housing element. And again, just to step back for those who are sort of maybe joining us, what is the housing element? The housing element is a mandatory required chapter of every jurisdiction's general plan. It's our blueprint for our community's long-term vision and the future. It's our blueprint for our community's long-term vision and the future. It's a plan for how the city will meet the housing needs of the community. It is updated every eight years, and that's what we refer to as, uh, cycles. Uh, it must be certified by the Housing, uh, the California Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm normally used to saying HCD, and includes different components, uh, such as our housing needs assessment, evaluation of past performance, sites inventory, outreach and engagement, constraints, analysis, goals, policies and programs. Just a quick breakdown, our arena allocation, which is definitely five times more than the fifth cycle, which was at 227, but yet here we are, we have 1359. Um, this is a, a number that's allocated, uh, from HCD through ABAG to each jurisdiction. This, this chart is just basically showing us the individual income categories. And this is quite important because most jurisdictions, they can meet their, uh, number of units. It's the individual categories that usually presents the challenge. So here, Arinda is faced with very low income, uh, of 372, low income of 215, moderate of 215, and above moderate of 557. That gives us the total of 1359. I'm going to, uh, after this slide, go into a little bit more, uh, details in terms of what the existing zoning is versus what I see the proposed zoning is. On January 4th, 2022, a notice of preparation was filed and posted, soliciting, uh, comments from lead responsible and trustee agency to submit comments concerning suggestions of areas of focus. The environmental impact report was prepared, uh, for the Plan Arinda project. That's all three components, downtown precise plans, housing element and safety element update. The EIR analyzed the potential environmental impacts of the Plan Arinda project. I didn't list, a lot of that list is, is part of the appendix of our SECO guidance, uh, in terms of aesthetics, land use, et cetera. The draft EIR was released in September of 2022. The final EIR, which is the draft EIR combined with the response to comments, makes up your final EIR that were released in January of 2023. The EIR was adopted by the city council, as we all know, on January 31st, 2023. A SECO litigation or a SECO law lawsuit was filed with Contra Causa County Superior Court by Arindians for Safe Emergency Evacuation, OC, as we refer to them, on March 3rd, 2023. A minute order was also issued on February 22nd, 2024, uh, that held, and this is not the full scope, but that it held the analysis supporting the significant unavoidable conclusions for wildfire evacuation impacts was insufficient, and there was ambiguous language on the applicability of a mitigation measure as it relates to development sites. There are other things, but this is just a brief, um, synopsis of it. A court judgment was issued on August 2024 for revisions of the EIR and setting aside the January 31st, 2023 Plan Arinda, uh, EIR certification and DPP. Now I'm going to look at a little bit detail of the numbers that I see. Our arena, our arena, uh, as we've mentioned, uh, the arena allocation is 1359. The housing element identified a buffer of about 25%. That buffer is not 25% of 1359, but it's 25% of your low and very low income units, that 372 and that 215. So what we're looking at now was our existing capacities. The vacant and underdeveloped site capacity came out as 543. The concern with the little bit with the 543 is this is a base number. It doesn't take in, in consideration any physical characteristics of the sites, such as slopes and, and, and setbacks, things like that. But what we've looked at is 543. We've looked at approved projects of 90. This is 10 Erwin, Erwin, um, Vista Way. I call it, well, Verde Vista. That's our senior housing project. It looks that, I think this will be the last year we can, uh, include Santa Maria site as part of that number. And then the projected ADUs, we anticipated based on what we see currently of 10 ADUs being approved per year. If you're curious of where we're at right now, at least for 2024, we have approved at least 18 projected ADUs for the, just this year. So where that brings me is a total existing capacity of seven, 713, uh, units for existing capacity. The EIR analysis, let me address that mostly. I think I hear a lot about the 1618 and of course the, uh, housing opportunity sites that are outside of the downtown area at 765. This is an analysis of the highest density that we could possibly impose on all the sites that we are looking at and I have identified in the EIR. So this is the highest density. The EIR, also in the project description, states this may not occur. So the 28 to 2383 is such a benefit because it's a flexibility. This is a programmatic EIR. So the purpose of that is reduction of time, reduction of cost, reduction of time and cost from staff, reduction of time and cost from a particular developer who may not want to go through the hoops of submitting a new environmental analysis. So again, the 1618, 765 is the highest maximum, uh, that one could do on these sites. The housing element presented and put forth the realistic capacity. We talk about realistic capacity, you're talking about development standards, we're talking about parking. We're talking about using a portion of a site that's available, not the full site. So you will see in the housing element that amounts to 421 and 486. Last week, because of an open case, I did receive a call, uh, for a meeting with HCD staff. Uh, I was joined by City Manager and, uh, the City Attorney in that meeting. And it was, two things were made clear to me by HCD. And that first thing was HCD does not consider the Caltrans site as part of demonstrating adequate sites for the sixth cycle. That is something that was requested to be put in by staff. Now, having said that, that takes away a bit of the buffer that we assumed or thought that we may have had for, uh, the housing element. The second thing that was made clear to me from HCD staff is that they must agree to which sites are selected. And it was emphasized at all times, Arinda must have sufficient sites to accommodate arena requirements. So those were two things that was expressed during that time. And just to put it out a little further, and of course I had, uh, the City Manager and the City Attorney there with me, they did lay out there that they were trying to determine whether they need to decertify our housing element. But I think at this point, um, um, we have them at a point where they are monitoring us at this time. And so I do have to report back after tonight, and I do have to report to them as we progress through the, the process, giving them the doc, the documents and the final documents as signed or, or, uh, by the city council. So I wanted to bring out this chart in terms of the numbers that I see in, in the various documents and to explain that 1618. We can come back to this, but I'm going to move on and talk about the California legislative updates of the housing. Why? You'll see in a, in a minute why I'm bringing up these, these, uh, bills. So Senate, Senate Bill Four, this is a buy right housing on religious and higher education sites. The reason I mention this is because this is something that property owners of religious institutions and higher education sites can do today. This is effective on January 2024. Uh, this allows buy right approval for affordable housing projects on land owned by religious organizations and higher educational institutions if specific, uh, criteria are met. So just some of those criteria is land must be owned on or before January 1st, 2024 by religious or higher education organization. A hundred percent of those projects total, uh, total units, except for the manager's units are for lower income household, except that up to 20% may be for moderate income households. It must comply with the objective development standards, must comply with the replacement housing provisions. If residential units are demolished, it allows the default density, which is currently current, we're talking new, the existing legislative laws and our current existing zoning. So 20 dwelling units per acre for Arinda. It would allow for a height of over one story, uh, beyond the maximum building height, one parking space per unit. And then, of course, eligible projects may utilize state density bonus law, uh, to, uh, increase the, the number of units. Um, SB Four applies to three of the sites that we have been identified within the housing element. But of course, this applies to any site in Arinda that is a religious institution or a higher education. But what I'm focused on here is if this Senate bill and these qualifying sites that we've identified in the housing element today were to be, uh, or application were to be received, we would be looking at a total capacity of 20 units per acre. That's the full sites, 253 units. Stay with me here. Um, Senate Bill Four, what we've proposed in the rezoning, for our rezoning as part of our housing element, we would look at a total capacity with a minimum and a maximum of 20 units per acre, up to 25 units per acre. We would be looking at 99 to 124 units under our proposed rezoning, because we were looking at a certain percentage or portion of each of the sites and not the full site. SB Six, that's also another existing law. It allows housing as permitted use on parcel zone for office, retail and parking, subject to local objective standards and discretionary review requirements. This is just existing. Uh, SB Six was further amended by AB 2011 and AB, uh, 2243. This provides for a streamlined administrative process of eligible 100 affordable and mixed unit housing developments, uh, projects. Um, all standards for eligible development projects, objective only and allowable densities typically range from 20 to 70 units per acre. AB 2243 amends the Affordable Housing and High Roads Jobs Act to expand, uh, some clarity around some of the benefits. One of the benefits that is, is clarified further here is, uh, previously, I believe if you were within, uh, 500 feet of a freeway, you, you could not look at the, you could not use these assembly bills as a, a means to streamline, uh, housing development. What you will see in the new version of, um, the law is that you now can, uh, propose additional affordable housing. You just have to meet certain design standards such as, excuse me, such as no balconies facing freeways, noise standards. Assembly Bill 2295, I just threw in there, it's not related to the previous two bills, but I just threw in there, I'm related to the above, because this is one that we tend not to, uh, talk of frequently. But this is a bill, uh, that allows housing development projects, uh, that are deemed allowed on any real property owned by local edu- educational agencies for workforce housing development, if the project satisfies certain conditions, objective zoning standards and design review standards. So that's just an extra bill I, I do in there that's related to, uh, uh, educational institutions. Here's what I want to show. The downtown capacity with the existing zoning and today's laws, SB Four, SB Six, uh, uh, 2011, 2244, the existing potential today, if we had developers coming into the office, we would be looking at 1,939 units. And that's given the half mile radius from BAR, uh, that allows an applicant to almost go up to 70 units, uh, per acre. Uh, the 10 units is because it's, uh, outside of the half mile radius of BAR. So that, that, uh, would stay with the current existing zoning of 10 units per acre. Uh, the other sites would have the ability to apply on the SB Four, SB, or not in this case, the churches are not located here, but, um, they, they would be able to apply under SB Six, SB 2011, SB 2244, and we will be looking at 1,939 in units existing today. Now, going back to our housing element, looking at the downtown proposed rezoning and what was the, uh, uh, most of the talk and discussions and several meetings and years of, of, of paperwork and document, looking at the EIR maximum, we are saying 16, 1618 units. But again, that 1618 may not occur. It's just the highest density possible that these lots can do. So what you're seeing are the identified housing elements, and you're seeing the proposed rezoning of 55 units, uh, per acre, 30 units, uh, per acre and 25 units per acre to reach that 1618 again, compared to looking at existing zoning and the use of SBs, uh, the Senate bills and the Assembly bills. Could you do it today? Sure. Could you, could you propose a rezoning and still apply those bills? Of course you can. But when we look at the downtown precise plan, the proposed rezoning, it just gave a little bit more of, lack of better word, control. Because we would have the DPP with the sites already rezoned, we would also have the objective design standards, which is plays an important part, crucial part here. Okay, now I'm going to move on because those were the ones that talked about looking at our existing zoning plus what we were trying to propose. There's a new bill out there. Now, if we get into the situation where HCD determines that they do need to decertify our housing element, which I'm, I'm working to counter that, there are new parameters out there for the Building Remedy Projects 2.0. There, it's a modernization. This is, uh, uh, Buffy Wicks, AB 1893, which becomes effective January 1st, 2025. Uh, this ends a bit of the free-for-all approach and allows for builders' remedy projects to maintain a, a sort of grandfather status if you want to stay under the existing Housing, Housing Accountability Act, or if you want to convert your project to the new AB 1893, this allows for that. Site restrictions is one of the areas that's new. Uh, current law, builders' remedy projects may take any form that the applicant choose and may be proposed on virtually any parcel within the jurisdiction that lacks a substantially compliant housing element. Most of the sites are still permissible locations for business remedy. AB 1893 just excludes sites that abuts now heavy industrial, uh, uses. There is now a density and, uh, a density of minimum and density maximum with AB 1893. Uh, again, it sets new density minimums for sites that are zoned with, uh, uh, with a minimum density and are within one half mile of a commuter rail station or heavy rail station. The builder's remedy project must meet the applicable minimum density. In terms of the maximum, AB 8, 1893 provides a generous maximum density set by a complex formula, and this could range, uh, anywhere from 10 to 65 dwelling units per acre that may be available, and even higher if the sites are already zoned and the general plan allows for residential development on the site. You could still add the density bonus and increase by up to 100% of qualifying projects. Continue. Other areas of this AB 1893 that we would be subject to would be the objective standards. That's a bit of a change. Prior to AB 1893, the builders' remedy projects could not be disapproved or phased to comply with the local objective standards, and projects were designed in a manner that disregarded these standards anyway. But on the AB 1893, jurisdictions may impose certain objective standards on builders' remedies. I call them 2.0 projects, in that the standards, as long as the standards do not preclude the project from assessing the proposed density maximum that was identified above. Uh, I think there's two more areas, uh, that I briefly looked into. Is it, it does reduce affordability, current laws, 20, 20% affordable to lower income or 100% affordable to moderate or middle income household. Although the AB 1893, a project could satisfy, uh, as a, uh, and qualify as a builders' remedy project with 7%, 7% of units are affordable to extremely low income household. 10% of units are affordable to very low income households. At least 13% of the units are affordable to lower income households, and 100% of the units are affordable to moderate income households. Um, there's a, there's a little exception for 10 units or fewer. The new benefits and protections for the benefit, builders' remedy, uh, projects is that this bill makes it clear that this is a consequence to jurisdictions for not having, uh, uh, met their, uh, their mandates in terms of the arena allocations. Uh, but it just goes on to further talk about projects may not be treated as non-conforming uses, but they are deemed to comply with all applicable local standards. And, uh, it goes further to limiting the projects to five hearings or less. And these are some of the things that you, if you haven't figured that out, they're also trying to bridge the streamlined ministerial reviews under SB 35 and SB 330. So this, less than five hearings or less than five hearings, um, comes from some of those streamlined, uh, uh, parts. So this is a new bill that would be, uh, coming forth should we get decertified or, or not meet our, uh, housing arena. Uh, so staff's recommendation is to rescind and set aside the Arinda City Council's January 31st, 2023, although certification of the Plan Arinda Environmental Impact Report and related approvals, including the Downtown Precise Plan, Adopted Resolution Number 47-24. Again, what I'm trying to show you and pinpoint here is related to what your existing zoning is in combination with existing legislative, uh, laws versus what we are showing in our revised housing element. So the number is higher, potentially higher under our, uh, existing, uh, uh, zoning district and our, um, uh, utilizing the legislative bills. Last slide here, I'll conclude. Um, next steps, compliance with the court order, starting with preparation and recirculation of. starting with preparation and recirculation of the revised portions of the EIR. Release of the revised EIR portions for a forty-five day comment period. This would include state clearinghouse. And the goal here is mid-October. Select and then set a city council hearing for the review and consideration of recertification, re-adoption of the mitigation measures, the sequel findings and potentially the DPP. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Cross. I'm going to turn to ask the council. Don't go away. I'm sure we're going to have questions for you.
No, Madam Mayor, I have a second part of the staff report before you turn to questions.
Okay.
That's right. Okay, well, I'll jump right in. So I just wanted to thank LaShawn for what she and the team did. Did ask her to look at everything with a fresh set of eyes. You know, I think we all chafed the city staff and the council and residents sort of under all the loss of local control and the increasing state mandates, even as Kathleen Jenkins noted that that is the case. And some of the other speakers also did that. We're not done yet with these state bills that have even modified the lay of the land as we worked on completed and had a certified housing element. So, for example, recently, the governor asserted to all the school districts, the one bill, twenty-two ninety-five, where school districts, as a matter of right, and all these bills do not require us to rezone. Developers can proceed as a matter of right without any discretionary rezoning, which is also frustrating because HCD still puts us through this exercise where we have to do these rezonings, even as you saw from the slide, probably ninety-five percent or more of the sites are already eligible under state law for housing throughout the community without the city taking any action. But the governor, again, was asserting to the school districts that they own all the land under how schools are funded and that the state may in fact be pursuing housing on school sites on the basis of that bill. So it's a constantly changing environment. And so I understand sometimes the frustrations about that. And as this is my last meeting, one of my concerns is that we go through this process. I heard some people here talking about, you know, can we get someplace working together? Even if we were to adopt lower zoning in the downtown or portions of the downtown precise plan, people can still come in and request to do development on sites we don't rezone to the levels we're talking about. So I agree, there needs to be more concerted effort to try to get the legislature to be more reasonable, a lot of areas, acknowledging very high fire severity zones and whatnot. But so far, cities working together in the league have not been successful in doing that. That doesn't mean we give up on that. And the city recently retained a legislative advocacy firm that will help us engage in that because I think we have a very telling tale here in Arinda. And even a city, I think, as you'll hear, made a good faith effort to comply with the housing elements laws. We are just squeezed by these competing priorities. So with that, you know, I arrived at the city just sort of at the start of this process, three and a half years ago. There had been some initial efforts there. And, you know, it has played out differently than, of course, I think that anyone on staff would have liked. You know, we've even heard from, you know, people do, and as I go through my remarks here, you know, I can attest that there was always an effort to comply in good faith, that the city council from the time I started said they wanted us to make a good faith effort to comply with the state mandates as much as we found those objectionable for a variety of reasons, including avoiding negative consequences. And we do see those playing out in states up and, in cities up and down the state where the state is suing them, imposing penalties, monetary penalties. Again, that, this is the environment in which we all have to listen. But as we've gone through this process, you know, I have heard sort of sometimes a bit of revisionist history, misstatements of fact or falsehoods by omission to a certain degree. I mean, things are complicated. Some, you know, we heard some people talk about credibility. We heard that this evening. Just to rest assured that between our prior planning director, the interim, our current planning director, other city staff, including myself, the planners at our two firms that work with us on this, we probably have people that have over a hundred years of experience. And, you know, I think everyone did a good faith effort to comply, but this is not unusual. This type of litigation on an EIR and these types of concerns are not unusual in the development process. The city council, as I said from the beginning, wanted us to comply in good faith. They wanted to avoid the builder's remedy. And even the governor only recently signed in the last two weeks that bill that strengthens the builder remedy. And I don't think we're done there, right, in regard to that. So I think that was, one of the goals was to avoid us being outside of a period where we'd be compliant. And even some of the people that are speaking now and critical of things were advocates for us not to be out of compliance and avoid the builder's remedy. So that was always was motivating us with a limited timeframe about when we had to do this. We had to have our housing element adopted by January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So we just, we just made that. That was special meeting that night in order to do that. And we would have preferred more flexibility in our approach. When I started, there was some discussion of adding housing in the downtown in a much smaller capacity. But the arena process really overwhelmed us as it did other cities with Arinda as a mostly built-out community having less opportunities than other places to comply. Even though we advocated and cities up and down the state advocated for a different process, that didn't play out. And as we've talked about, developing a housing element is complex because there are not just meeting the numbers. There's other factors that are addressed in what we developed, some frequently asked general questions about housing that we have to firmly further fair housing, a number of other factors that enter into it. You saw the complexities about the balancing of the levels of affordability and whatnot. And to sort of launch off, last week, the council was very kind and recognized my service here with the proclamation. And I shared some comments after that, that, you know, it's been a great pleasure to work here. And I'm just going to sort of touch on some of those. But again, I've worked with eight council members in my three and a half years. And what I find here is that the community does elect very talented, bright and thoughtful people who value the community and consensus. I see a lot of effort for there to be consensus. And they're exercising independent judgment in a collective manner. And they use a variety of touchstones for that. Formal council meetings such as this, staff analysis and recommendations, boards and commissions, plus everyday interactions with the community, whether at the supermarket or any other place where you might hear from people. And, you know, Arinda, as a community, I've worked in a number of communities. We have a small but dedicated staff. They get a lot done. We do have one of the smallest staffing per capita and one of the lowest per capita budget levels. But I, I find everyone has a true can-do attitude. We try to rise to the challenge and manage competing priorities. And when we were working on the housing element, we did have to address other things, wildfire issues, launching our wildfire prevention programs. And, but I find our staff do that in a professional and caring manner. It's unfortunate that sometimes people disparage staff and that. And you'll hear again, you know, not everything was perfect in our approach, but we were doing this, trying to accomplish this in a very meaningful way. And overall, I find the residents are engaged and caring. And we've heard from some of them this evening. They're generally overall very supportive of the city. It's been amazing how many friends of groups there are that support the Adobe and the Creeks and the Nature Center and the Arinda Association, whatnot. And the community is very involved. And many of the residents, I've engaged with them quite a bit and I appreciated their advice and insights and whatnot. And that enters into the equation. But again, we're not without some people. It's the same in every community. From the places I've worked, it's fewer and farther between here and Arinda. But some can be critical, they can be a contrarian, curmudgeonly, or even bullying. And in some instances, all those are combined together. But I do understand people are approaching things because they're concerned about the community with, with passion. But I've always believed that public policymaking doesn't have to be adversarial process. And most of the time in Arinda, it isn't. You know, as again, as I said, people are passionate about their beliefs and desires, and that's admirable. But I do believe that not adversarial approach is what people are more interested in overall. So approach, some approach matters like Plan Arinda, you know, as, you know, sort of a sport or as a litigator would, taking bits of information and some facts and laying them out in a manner to support or argue for the client's position. In this case, the client's position or perspective is quite often is their own. And that doesn't mean they're not valued perspectives, but our role as your staff and city council is to balance that. So, but by the very nature of that, sometimes it's dismissive of other perspectives. And we heard a comment to that tonight about people perhaps making up their mind. Well, that applies on the other side of the equation as well. And sometimes people hear what they want to hear. For example, January thirty-first, when you introduced the housing element, and I understand how the numbers got confusing because we were focused on the minimum needed to comply. But we introduced the housing element as if and when the zoning was fully implemented, how many units would be. So that's always been an option to do less than the totality of the rezonings in the housing element. And those are separate discretionary actions as are the rezoning of the other housing element sites. So as a reminder, when I arrived, one of the first things I heard and understood was that evacuation was of great concern to the community. And I recommended very early in the shoot that we undertake this AB seven forty-seven analysis. And the council budgeted some of our first measure R monies to do that. As that evacuation analysis provided by the state was the only guidance the state had at that point for how to, how to address evacuations. And then we did use that in the, the environmental impact that was being prepared. And just to note too, because there's been a big discussion about modeling and whatnot, we launched that evacuation analysis off of the Arinda Fire District's approved county wildfire protection plan, which does model three scenarios for fire here in Arinda. And that's what we had at that point in time. We issued our notice of preparation, which did go to the fire district. That's the time that other agencies are supposed to give us their ideas about how to approach things. There was not that recommendation at that time. Doesn't mean it's not valuable advice from the fire chief. And we are taking that up in other ways, as I'll cover in a moment. So, so there was some level of modeling that that analysis is based on. And it launched off of the fire district's approved plan. The observation out of the shoot was as a city's evacuation is already constrained and the addition of even a single unit would exacerbate that. Question is, what would additional modeling, how would that help in this scenario? That doesn't mean we didn't evaluate it, but it just seemed to a certain degree to be, you know, fruitless, not of value. But that doesn't mean that we didn't explore those options. And I think sometimes what I hear is installing a false hope in some members of the community that a modeling or more expansive model would somehow allow us to say no to housing. And that's been made very clear by the state up and down that that is not a factor that we can use to not approve housing. And that's why we have to default to a statement of overriding considerations. And we did focus our analysis then on mitigation measures and safety element projects that we thought might put us over the finish line. We recognize the judge didn't agree with that. So that's why we'll return our attention back to those types of things very shortly. So, you know, as I mentioned, there is a place for more dynamic fire modeling. And that's why I took the lead in meeting with the three law Arinda cities proposed a joint evacuation plan in that area. That ultimately resulted in, when we asked, they agreed to that. And we asked CCTA about providing a local match. They then decided that was such a good idea that they have applied for and got a one point four million dollar grant to do county-wide evacuation modeling, which, and a plan, which will focus initially on the law Arinda area. So they're about to issue their RFP for that service. And that will also include the traffic engineering side of the equation because CCTA is the cost of transportation authority. So that's their expertise and they will bring that expertise to what they're doing there. So I think that effort will launch very, very soon. And that will, that will help us do, map out how to respond to evacuations. Well, we have issues already today, whether there is a unit added or not. And we are working on projects that will help in that regard. So the IR, as is common, you heard LaShune mention that, they evaluate a bigger envelope than needed to necessarily satisfy just the housing element. Because we're not completely in control about what HCD would approve. So if we don't evaluate a bigger envelope, then we're going to be in trouble if sites get dropped, such as the Caltrans site or even now the Bank of America site's being built with commercials. So it's creating our first known net loss problem there. But we're, then if we don't address that, we're at risk for this known net loss rule, which could again result in decertification of our housing element. And so now having the option to zone sites beyond the housing element sites in the downtown to include housing, even though it's not even really necessary under other state laws, gives us some flexibility. And just to note too, that we don't get to pick and choose. We can nominate sites, but if HCD views they're not applicable or they don't believe they'll be developed in this cycle, they can say no. And we can still find ourselves with the housing element decertified. So there's plenty of work ahead. And, you know, we're going to have to work collaboratively to get that done. So this gets back to then the, the complying with the court order, which again, I won't be here to do that. But tonight's action is, just sets the stage for that. Tonight's action, what's before the council is not the downtown precise plan and what a new downtown precise plan might look like. It's not additional housing sites yet. It's just to rescind the certification, the IR and the downtown precise plan. And as mentioned, that was always an option to zone less than what was included. But we're always going to have to keep in mind that we need to zone enough sites totally that HCD will approve to have a compliant element with some level of buffer. So, you know, I think what you hear too, and that doesn't mean that we can't come to some agreement still, is that the city and the plaintiffs disagree perhaps on the approach or what the judge's order means. And ultimately, at the end of the day, is the judge will have the final say as to which party is right. But that doesn't mean we can't narrow the differences. And I think that's occurred to a great degree in some areas. And I don't want to prejudge what we'll be presenting soon as far as the addendum to address some of the concerns. But then we will be looking at the build-out scenario. Now, we did do that. The difference was the evacuation analysis was late add. And that's the one area in which we didn't look at the built-out scenario. And that's also because that came sort of late in the process, September, October, November, when we had to have the EIR certified and the housing element approved by January. So we were also trying to manage some time constraints there. So as you heard, the planning director say, others are taking an interest in the status of our housing element and the delays associated due to litigation. And none of that was initiated by the city. But we got a request from HCD and we met last week with their compliance unit. That was a housing advocacy group that filed a complaint. So they opened a case. The good news is, LaShawn indicated, is they seem at this point satisfied that the city council is actively working to comply with the law and bring, to keep us in compliance. They've asked us to document that, which we will do based in, you know, touching with them what your first steps were this evening. But also just this week, I got another email from the Yimby Law Group, a nonprofit that sues cities in their housing element, asking for an update and whether we'd be able to meet our compliance. Because we do have to rezone these sites by early twenty twenty-six. Or we'll be out of compliance again. So by the time we get through this EIR process, it'll, we'll have a year or less to rezone these sites. And just want people to be aware of that because it might seem rushed at that, rushed at that point in time when people feel passionate. As we saw when we initiated some of the rezonings earlier this year. And then those got the planning commission tabled those, wanted us to look at the downtown first before the site, other opportunity sites. But then we got the adverse ruling on the EIR and we cannot consider rezoning of any sites until we get a new EIR in place. So that's sort of the critical path there. So at the end of the day, you know, it is sort of a conundrum as to how we're going to balance this and people's passions. And, you know, the plaintiffs and others, you know, have expressed their concerns time and time again. You know, it's being perceived by some as being anti-housing and investment in the status quo. And, but the, the complications are there as far as where the state is and what they want cities to do. And it's unfortunate then that, you know, there's vilification when all we're doing is trying to in good faith comply. And there's an option to, as pointed out with the downtown precise plan, as we said during that January public hearing, we have to, the minimum we have to rezone for the housing element sites. And those were future decision points. Nothing has been rezoned. The downtown precise plan doesn't require all the sites to be rezoned. And I think that's where there's been a level of misunderstanding. So I'm certain that, you know, some this evening, my remarks will find that, you know, some criticism them or people will take them the wrong way. You know, that we're vilifying people or whatnot. But I want to make sure that is that we're all looking at the city's best interest. I think there can be a disagreement about what that is or where we land in the future. I wanted to make sure that people are aware that the city is not completely in control of its own destiny in regard to the housing element and how we accomplish this. And as you can see from, again, why I asked LaShune and her staff to demonstrate where these bills are, is much of what we're talking about, housing can take place there if we don't do anything. And I, and I can just imagine people two or three years now from saying, but you reduced it to six hundred units in the downtown or whatever is the number where the council lands after public input. And then someone can propose a site. lands after public input, and then someone can propose a site, and we see another four hundred units develop that wasn't called for in the downtown precise plan or the housing element, because that, that's a real possibility, and, and we see that happening in other communities. So, uh, so this gets back to my initial, part of my initial comment, is truly after forty-five years in public service in a variety of communities, I don't believe public policy has to, making, has to be adversarial. And unfortunately, in some communities, you know, we go down that adversarial path, Arinda is not as bad as some places I've worked, as you know. And, uh, what's at stake though, I think, is, is too great for the decision not to be made on the basis of facts, in a collaborative environment, understanding our current circumstances, and the paramount need to avoid negative consequences for the community as a result of, you know, um, sort of how some things are being characterized, certain degree of fear mongering. But, you know, evacuation is a real issue. I wish the lay of the land were different, but it's not, and that's why we do work on evacuation related things on a regular basis, and we're lucky as a city, because we do have measure R that can fund some of those things. Other cities don't have resources to perhaps, uh, just met with Public Works this week on their initial plans to modify access to the freeway, and they have, we have to get that approved by Caltrans, but that was one of the highest priorities, was to allow people to access the freeway differently if we were doing an evacuation, so. Um, and if people know, we've worked on red flag days, some in the community don't want the red flag parking restrictions, but, uh, the council modified that criteria, so we're ready to roll out in other neighborhoods, our contraflow, we're doing our signal synchronization with the federal funding that's, um, coming out, that will allow us to look at Maraga Way as a contraflow, a variety of other things, I think, so. And, and I just encourage people also look at the mitigation measures and the projects and programs outlined in the safety element, to see there's numerous things that ultimately will help us, um, be better prepared for evacuation. But, uh, so with that, I think that, you know, this really tonight marks, you know, again, a redo. I wish it was different than, um, having to be done in a court order, but again, the city staff is, I know, committed to bringing something forward that will comply and allow us to get back on track to avoid potential negative consequences. So exactly what that looks like, we'll be sharing that with people, and be soliciting input and comments on that, and hopefully that, uh, lands at a spot, uh, where, you know, everyone gets a bit more comfortable in the context of what the mandates are, and that we are trying to navigate a, a lot of complexities here, so. So I, I hope that was helpful, only to reset the stages, uh, I get ready to depart, but I think Arinda can navigate this, and my hope is that, and, and a few months, we'll hear that, you know, it's been done, and people are more comfortable, but I don't think we'll be able to make everyone comfortable just simply because of the constraints under which we, with which we have to comply. So thank you for indulging me in my last meeting this evening, so.
Thank you, City Manager Biggs. Um, I definitely, uh, am going to allow the council to ask as many questions as, uh, they have. However, um, while I usually always go last, I do have one question I'd like to ask first, and that, um, Director Cross and, um, City Manager Biggs, the information you provided was excellent in terms of reminding all of us how many laws we're already subject to that are completely out of our control. Um, unfortunately, if I understand correctly, um, that, um, and we cannot take, we cannot take advantage of all those laws in our housing element. Our housing element still requires us to do the rezoning. My question for you is, and you did, and the slide that you showed that was excellent, where, um, if we had, and we haven't, of course, but if we had rezoned in accordance with the downtown precise plan, as we originally intended, and we were at the sixteen, eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? However, the existing laws that we cannot control, um, would allow people to build as much as nineteen fifty-nine? Is that the number?
Yes, we, we can't control, even if we did do the rezoning.
My question is, is if we had done the rezoning as intended, such that it was, even, even though we knew that that was a much bigger number than might actually happen, but if we had done that rezoning, that would not have, that does not stop any developer's ability to operate under the other existing laws, correct?
Correct.
So even if we had zoned to sixteen eighteen, or even a lesser number?
Correct.
Pick any number, if we had rezoned to six hundred, those other laws allow the potential, and we have no control over that?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was well clarified, so. We would appreciate following the meeting rules. Um, okay.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
Just to make sure it's clear? The, the, um, what was the other number? Nineteen hundred, is it, is the other figure nineteen something? Yeah, nineteen thirty-nine. Those nineteen hundred units can be built whether or not there's zoning for it?
That's correct.
Right? So that's what you were saying, so sixteen hundred could be zoned, and then nineteen hundred could come in and be located somewhere else? Right? That's not zoned for that housing?
That's correct.
So you could double?
No.
No?
The difference would be the sixteen to nineteen thirty-nine.
The difference is just the difference.
Would be the, the cap. If we had lower zoning, people could exceed that up to the nineteen thirty-nine.
Got it, okay.
Okay. So now I'll open it, I'll try to, I know you probably have a lot of questions.
I just have a follow-up, so while we're having, on this slide, um, was there any density, I know you said this, but I didn't follow.
You're not, you're Mike.
Included in this.
You're Mike, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. She cannot be. Um, is there any density bonus factored into your math on this slide, or not?
No, we did not include density.
Okay, so those are apples to apples in terms of the density.
Correct.
And we did take our opportunity, meeting with the compliance people at H C D, and Melinda Coy, who's actually the housing element person who wrote our certification letter, and we did plan, asked, given these laws, do we still have to do the rezoning? The answer was yes, but my more recent thinking is maybe at some point in time, state legislation could say that if you can comply, if these interstate laws put you into compliance already, why do we have to go through this exercise? Now, that's a double-edged sword though, right? It's, it's sort of further aggregating control to the state, but it just seems like, you know, we go through a lot of exercise to look at rezoning. And the only good thing about the rezoning, or like the downtown precise plan, is some of these laws is we can require people to comply with objective design standards, which might address some quality issues, if not quantity issues, as far as the development that might occur, so.
Okay. Any other follow-up to this question?
A follow-up to this question? If we, um, if there is no rezoning, right, in an area where other state laws allow for building, would the, that development, um, be development that we could take credit for? Or, there, there is some issue with that, and I, I wasn't clear on it. Can you explain that?
I, I think at the end of the day, if we achieve our housing element reading numbers, which honestly, I don't think will happen during the time that we won't have those numbers in units built, but yes, you can take credit. If we get more A D U's in our annual report, it'll eat away toward, uh, the total number we have to generate through other sites. So there's, there's the planning, and then there's the compliance. So any units built count towards compliance, whether they were on approved housing element sites or not.
But if a project applies, you, you don't get credit, if it's not rezoned through the city's rezoning process, you don't get credit till the housing element, until it's built, or some, was there some difference there, or am I?
That's a good question, whether it was entitled or built? That I don't know off the top of my head. You know, certainly if it was built in construction, you would get credit. I mean, our annual, uh, housing, we have to do an annual housing element compliance report, we do that about April of each year, looking back at the prior year. I can't visualize the table to see whether it's got approved and/or built. I think it does look at them both, and I don't know whether H C D would say if it was approved, but it wasn't a housing element site, whether they would give us credit, so that's a good question. I don't know if LaShawn knows.
Yeah, I, I have to check in.
But H C D is looking at, for progress, H C D is looking at the rezoning, is my understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
Look at that, a rezoning program.
Thank you.
Okay. Everything on this particular topic?
Good.
Okay. Are there other questions for staff?
I, I do, well, I, um, I think this is not actually a question, I, I think this is a question, I, actually, if we go back to the, if we go, actually, it is a question. If we go back to the, that first slide, Mayor, um, the, the last slide of your presentation. There, um, was that it?
No.
It's the last one?
Oh, the very, no.
Yes, okay. Okay, great.
Next steps is a very.
There we go.
Okay.
So, uh, just because I, you know, obviously, we usually get comment before our questions, and it often guides our questions. In this particular instance, it seems to me that really what we have before us this evening is rescinding, um, the approvals that, that are laid out in our agenda, and in the, in the, um, item that we're, is it, uh, the resolution? Um, and that there's going to be a time after the forty-five day comment period where this is going to come back to us. And, and so there'll be a time between now and then, when people who have questions, whether they be about the housing new ordinances that were discussed, or, uh, rather, the new legislation, potential legislation, where people can get questions answered about that, and we can discuss that at that time.
Yes.
So that those are really kind of the broader thing that we talked about, would really be something that we can, um, delve more into at that time and, and get clarity as well, in between now and then. And really, what we're looking at tonight is simply the, uh, rescinding of the, of these approvals, and I didn't hear any, but any of the speakers suggest that we do otherwise. So I don't think I have any further questions at this time, and we'll let those questions get answered at, at that further time. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ibersen?
Sorry, just. Um, it's Director Cross. If you could please refresh my memory, I know you've, um, we have been told this before, but, uh, I get confused every time I am told that the, each ordinance that needs to be adopted to be compliant by twenty, January twenty twenty-six is a discretionary decision, and at the same time, if we don't do them by the deadline, we are out of compliance. So are they only discretionary to the extent we want to stay in compliance or be out of compliance, or is there more genuine discretion to that next chapter in the process?
Well, if, if, for example, uh, let's just use an example outside of downtown, you know, we had the first public hearing in the planning commission about the opportunity sites out of the downtown, and if the council were to say, after public hearing, the planning commission recommended that we take out, let's just pick the Miramonte site, um, we would have to, uh, come back, identify an alternative site somewhere, put that in front of H C D, have them bless that, and update the housing element, um, to include that. You know, arguably, the council could do that and hope H C D would approve something, but we would probably recommend that we pause the process enough to consult with them if, if we saw ourselves going down that path, and then we'd have to look at a site that was evaluated under the E I R, you know, that would be the maximum limit of the universe. And then we could pivot to, let's just say, the McSonic Temple site, if now we said they were talking about doing a home for aged masons, for example, but we'd have to do the same process at the end of H C D's buy-off that was going to happen in the planning period, right? But, so it'd be an iterative process, you know, and depending on timing, you may or may not have time, but also, in my experience, if H C D sees a city's making a good faith effort to do that, they wouldn't necessarily pull our, um, certification, but we also know there's advocacy groups out there would be advocating for them to do that, so, so it's, it's, it's something we'd have to communally navigate, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Looking this way.
I was just hoping staff could comment a little bit, I know it's not, um, it just, it goes to this last slide about, about the opportunity that we're going to have to get public comment through the, through the next, sort of, just to address the process and the next step. So I know we have a forty-five day comment period, um, but before anything is read adopted, there will be a full opportunity for members of the public to state their viewpoints and for us to consider them. I want to make sure that's the case.
Yes, you, I'm confirming that. There will be another hearing, uh, set before you, uh, so that you can review and consider, uh, recertification of the revised E I R, and looking at, again, read adoption of the mitigation monitoring, uh, uh, program, looking at accepting the new sequel findings, and what direction we take with the D P P. So yes, that, that's a full hearing, comments, everything, responses.
And you will have to adopt a new statement of overriding consideration, so, I mean, that, that goes without saying. Is it?
Okay. Other questions? All right. Seeing no other questions, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number forty-seven dash twenty-four, setting aside the January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three certification of the Plan Arinda Environmental Impact Report, and certain related approvals, including the downtown precise plan?
Before the motion, I just wanted to make a comment, um, just to address, I, I wanted to make two comments. One is, I do want to thank, um, there were members of the public that expressed their opinions, um, with, um, extreme civility, and while that's not required at all, um, it is very much appreciated, and so I want to thank those, um, who did that. Um, and then secondly, I just want to reassure the public that, as I'm sure it is the case for every council member here, um, I would absolutely, you know, no, no one is free making any, making their mind as to any, uh, determinations that are not before us tonight, and I think that we are all, at least I know I am, and I know that the mayor is, and I know that every colleague here is very committed to public input, and, um, very much considering the concerns of the public as we move forward with next steps. And thanks, finally, third comment, actually, thank you, staff, for a very detailed, uh, presentation.
Great. Um, can I, Mayor, would it be okay if I jump in as well?
If there are more comments, let's do that.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, and I just wanted to, I, I, I very much agree with everything that the vice mayor said, and, uh, certainly wanted to, to just make sure that everyone feels welcome to, to make comments during this, this period, and during the, during the forty-five day comment period before then, um, you know, if they're, certainly during the, the comment period in the official way, and, and to let us know, uh, thoughts about the overriding concerns, all of that public comment is, is, is very important. And here, you know, I, we all seem to have had, some of us, I don't know if it's just coincidence, that we all ended up choosing to wear some level of black. I can say that for me, you know, spending, uh, my last eight years here on the city council on this project, it was certainly, it's a dark moment to, to be rescinding the approvals that we, uh, worked so hard to put forward. Several of us here are, are lawyers, and so we also have great, all of us have great respect for the legal system. And, uh, the, through the legal system, we've learned that as laid out here in the resolution, the court has, uh, just determined that there are, are items that, um, need to be, need to be corrected or addressed, and, and we're committed to doing that. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that that was known, and, uh, that the comments were appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Then is there a motion?
I will move to adopt, um, Resolution Number forty-seven twenty-four, setting aside the January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three certification of the Plan Arinda Environmental Impact Report, and certain related approvals, including the downtown precise plan.
Sarah Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So it's a unanimous vote. Okay. Um, we have no other business tonight, um, and since it's a special meeting, we don't have some of our other categories, so it's our adjournment. Um, I do want to take the opportunity certainly to thank you again, David. Um, it has been, uh, a great, um, pleasure to have you here in Arinda. We appreciate everything that you've done, and we know that you'll continue to, uh, follow our new path. Uh, we'll be welcoming our new city manager, Linda Smith, who's sitting in our audience tonight, next week. Um, our next regularly scheduled council meeting is next Tuesday, October fifteenth, at seven P M. And, uh, we do want to, uh, thank, um, And we do want to thank, as the Vice Mayor said, I do want to thank staff greatly, especially the three staff members, and I will count you two, Siva, for being here tonight, that have given a lot to this process, and we have a long way to go, and we'll get there. So thank you very much. David, we wish you extremely well, and we look forward to staying in touch and following your retirement activities and letting you know what happens here in Arinda, so thank you. All right, with that, we're adjourned.